Good morning, everybody. I'll turn my mic on. We are now live and broadcasting. So, welcome to today's meeting. Transitional Committee Three. It's a single item issue, as is appropriate, to look at the 10-point plan for Sheffield City Council on tackling climate change. So, we've got lots of public interest, as I'm sure you'll all be reassured to hear, and we've got lots of questions to come today. So, welcome, and everybody. We're not expecting any fire alerts or any fire tests. So, if the fire alarms do go off, we'll need to make our way to the nearest exit, as we would normally do. And the muster point is in... Tudor Square. So, if you can make your way to Tudor Square, should a fire alarm occur, then that would be great. We have not got any items that require the exclusion of the press and public today, so that makes that easier. And item four, quickly, declaration of interest. Other than the fact that we live on this planet and it's all in our best interest to get it sorted, I don't think any of us have any declarations specifically in terms of work connections or anything like that. So, okay. So, none of us have declarations of interest. And item five, minutes of previous meetings. Has everyone had a chance to see them? And if so, are you happy that they're an accurate reflection of the meeting? Okay, I'm getting nods. Can I have someone to propose them as accurate, if possible? Okay, so we've got Paul, and seconded by Diane at the end, so thank you for that. Any matters arising from those minutes? No? Wonderful. Right, so we can tick off item number five. Now, because we've got so much interest from the public, I was going to suggest that we move public questions up the order. We've got 10 questions, well, we've got in excess of 50 questions that people would want answers from. The vast majority of them will do written answers to. We have 10 people looking to give their questions here today, and I'm going to try and give everyone upwards of two minutes to ask their questions, to try and keep them concise and to the point. But we'll not be giving answers to those questions today. We'll be provided written answers, and they're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the presentation, because much of what they may and will be asking, hopefully, will be addressed within the body of the main meeting. So, if that's okay with everyone, to move item eight up above item six. No dissenters? No? Excellent. So, if we could ask for the first questioners to be brought up, that would be wonderful. Oop, John's just off now. While we're bringing them in, just to note that all committee members are here today, there are no apologies for attendance today. So, the first question, I believe, is Mr Reese. Yeah? So, good morning, Mr Reese. We've got a lot of questions today, so if I could ask you to try and keep your questions to approximately two minutes, that would be great. And we'll not give you an answer specifically today, but if you watch the presentation, hopefully, you'll get some answers in that, and we'll make sure we write to you with a comprehensive answer to your questions. I know there are many of them in there, so over to you, Mr Reese. Thank you.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to put a question, and I'd like to begin by saying I welcome the 10-point plan. One of the benefits therein is improving people's homes, and the plan also explicitly recognises the value of working together, bringing the city together. And so, my question relates to external solid wall insulation for terrace houses, of which I live in one, and I guess others here may do likewise. And it's a simple question, really. It is that, I'm sure you're familiar, there are benefits to acting collectively in a terraced street in terms of external solid wall insulation, architectural, thermal and cost. And so, it's really what is the council doing, or might the council doing, do in order to enable that collective collaborative working from multiple owner-occupiers, such as perhaps providing or funding an expert to attend a collective meeting, or perhaps facilitating commercial negotiations with contractors to get a better price if we work collectively rather than individually.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr Reese, and thank you for taking the time to come along, and I really appreciate the question. It's really pertinent to how we tackle this going forward. We will get a response to you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for making some time for me. My question is about food and the fact that, given that our food system is responsible for about a third of our carbon footprint, what plans and actions the council has in place to ensure that sustainable food is available for everybody in Sheffield, and should those actions be part of this plan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Is it Mr Mitchell?
This is.
Yeah. Take a seat, sir.
Thanks very much.
And over to you, if you could ask a...
Well, thank you very much. Good morning. My name's Andrew Mitchell. You will actually see two questions. I've managed to steal two questions in, so there... But I think generally, the main question is, given the fact that our housing emits more CO2 emissions than our cars in the city, given the fact that it accounts for about 27% of our CO2 emissions, which is obviously very high, and it is something that I think the council is uniquely placed in terms of authority, legislation that's already available and so on, what are the council's plans to basically improve the thermal performance of our homes in the city, particularly given that it's now proven that heat pumps, the latest sort of government strategy, is not effective as a solution for poorly insulated homes? If it's a well-insulated home, it's not a bad strategy, but poorly insulated homes. So, just the main question again, what is the council's strategy, and I mean strategy, not just we'd like to do something, if you'll forgive me, the strategy to reduce the amount of heat lost through our homes because they've been poorly, or they exist as poorly insulated?
Thank you, Mr Mitchell. That's a really pertinent question, and we really appreciate you taking the time to come along today. We'll get an answer to you in due course, and please feel free to watch the rest of the proceedings, and hopefully, we'll touch on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a couple of people who've given questions that aren't attending, so we're going to have Alice read them out for us.
Yeah, this is someone who indicated their wish to attend but is now not able to do so this morning, and their question is, point four, the plan states that we will work towards reducing council emissions, I think that's emissions, to net zero by 2030. The council's original declaration and its ARIP report talked in terms of being zero carbon by 2030. Is this plan a pivot away from zero carbon and downsizing our emissions ambitions?
So, good morning. Mrs Green, is it? So, that question was from Mr Parach, and we will get a written answer to him. Now, Mrs Green, we weren't sure whether you were attending, but we...
Is it Mrs Green?
Is it Mrs Green?
It's Mrs Garin.
Garin, okay. Sorry, my mistake. Would you like to ask your question to the committee, please?
I wanted to know if the council was going to rethink public transport. Might it consider seeking funds to establish a large fleet of small electric minibuses, free to use, that would run at a frequency of about five minutes over an area inside the inner ring road linking the bus and rail stations and transport hubs, i.e. the cathedral with the rest of the city? They might even be permitted to go in the pedestrianised areas, provided they kept to a very low speed.
Thank you, Mrs Garin. We've got a lot of questions today, so what we'll do is, we'll get you a written answer to that, but you're welcome to stay around and watch the rest of the broadcast, if that's okay.
That would be fine.
Yeah, but really appreciate you coming in this morning and giving us that question. Thank you.
The second person unable to attend is someone called Gillian Green, and I'll read that question out. What is SCC's plan to increase the amount of different types of plastics and tetrapacks that can be recycled via my blue bin collection, please? I cannot take to supermarket recycling bins as I am disabled.
Hello. I speak as a retired GP from Fox Hill, who spent much of my working life with respiratory disease, working with respiratory disease, and I believe that the council needs to be far more ambitious in acting useful changes in addressing air pollution. In the last decade, there has been a dramatic shift towards bigger, heavier cars, and SUVs now count for a third of annual car sales. They are the second biggest cause of emissions rise ahead of heavy industry, including iron, steel, cement and aluminium, as well as ahead of trucks and aviation in terms of their emissions. They have poor fuel efficiency and require more resources in manufacturing than small cars. Not to talk about how unsafe they are, if you're knocked over by one, you're twice as likely to be killed. And so, they generate high volumes of pollutants, particularly carbon dioxide, and are characterised by poor environmental performance. The large cars emit an average 85% more greenhouse gases per kilometre than a small vehicle. That's according to UK government figures. So, I would like to challenge the exemption of large private vehicles, such as SUVs, from charges to enter the Sheffield inner-city clean air zone.
Thank you for taking the time to come in. Is that Dr Noor? Yeah, thank you for that. What we'll do is, we'll get you a written answer. We've got a lot of questions to get through today. Please feel free to watch the presentation, and though it's not covered completely, as you rightly point out, we will get a detailed response to you on the issues that you raise. Thank you. Is it Mr Frost?
John, morning. This is John Frost, Dr Jonathan Frost, and very happy that you invited me here today. Really appreciate the opportunity. Keep it nice and brief. So, the question I have for you as a hardcore scientist is, how will you elected members prove that you understand the basics of sustainability science? So, energy return on energy invested, classic greenwashing techniques, the realisation that most hydrogen is made from fossil fuels, most biofuel does not release as much energy as that used to make it in the first place, most carbon capture and storage techniques are expensive and energy-intensive, and just two more. Do they understand that electric vehicles are made using rare resources? And do they understand the concept of lifetime carbon costs of a product? That's it. If you'd like to do your homework on that, that would be awesome.
Thank you, Dr Frost, for bringing in those questions today. We'll get a written response to you, and hopefully, if you can watch the rest of the proceedings, you'll see where we're currently at, and it is incumbent on us all in here to be mindful that though we have some of the answers, we do not have all the answers, and together, we can have better outcomes. But thank you for taking the time.
Thank you very much, the opportunity.
Thank you. And I believe we've managed to rattle through the questions very, very rapidly, and that's all the questions now asked from the public. So, from those questions, they are, I'm not sure who's had a chance to see all the 50-odd questions that we've had, but they largely reflect the nature of the questions that we've had in terms of tackling transport, but also significant elements on housing. So, it does show the interest that we have here, and I believe it's probably appropriate if we go straight into the presentation by officers, so we can then crack on with the debate amongst members. Okay, so over to you. Who's taking this one? Okay, over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. It's very timely that the presentation on the 10-point plan for climate change, the draft plan, is coming to Transitional Committee today, because, as I'm sure you're all aware, COP26 is taking place in Glasgow, and at the moment, the final days of that are working attention rightly focused on the commitments that are likely to come out of the last two weeks' deliberations. Whatever your assessment is of the success of COP26, I think it's abundantly clear that what's needed is action now, and addressing climate change within the decade is essential to avoiding the catastrophic impacts of climate change. I just want to start my presentation with a quick quote that comes from the BBC this morning, related to the UN report that was released this morning, and that the document expresses alarm and concern that human activity has caused 1.1 degrees Celsius warming to date, and that the impacts have already been felt in every region. It stresses the urgency of increased ambition and action in relation to cutting emissions and adapting to climate change, and providing finance to poor countries, and it accepts in this critical decade. It notes with concern that every additional increment of global warming increases its impact on people and nature, and it emphasises the urgency of scaling up action now. So, what I want to talk about now, sorry, next slide, please, is the plan that we've developed, the draft plan that we've developed, and that we've brought back to you here today following conversations that we had at the last Transitional Committee, and to talk about some of the changes that we've now put through in that report, the draft that's been circulated, that's now been issued publicly, as this then progresses on its way to executive, hopefully, towards the end of this year. We had a really helpful discussion at the last meeting, and it was clear that there's some very key and very important themes that were coming out from committee, and I think it's, none of those were a surprise, but hopefully, we've now made changes to the report to make those clear in terms of what those emphasis are. One of the clear things that came from that conversation, and the points that were raised around the role of people in the report, and we've seen this morning, demonstrated this morning very clearly from the public questions, and obviously, the number of other public questions that were presented in writing to this committee, that we have many people in the city who are both interested but also have a significant understanding and expertise in this area. So, the involvement of people and actually how we work with people is going to be critical to the success of the plan. Also, not least in the fact that, as we know, there's going to be requirements around behaviour change, and that the actions that are going to be needed by people and individuals is going to be a change from what we're doing at the moment, and that doesn't just relate to people in the city, it also relates to people within the council and actually how we operate as officers and as members. So, we've made changes around those areas. We've also identified that there were some specific points that were made in the discussion. For example, councillor Huggins' point about decarbonising vehicles, and it was a point that was made by one of the members of the public asking questions earlier about electric vehicles, is that this isn't just related to looking at electric battery-powered vehicles, that we also need to consider alternatives such as fuel cell vehicles. There were a number of other points that were made, and we've looked to incorporate those. For example, one of the points that was raised by councillor Masters was about looking at green roofs, and we've done some further work into that, and we understand that, for example, the University of Sheffield has a green roof centre that's doing a lot of work on this, and as the image that's just clicked back up on the screen demonstrates, we've got a number of green roofs located within the city centre. This is one that's actually within the heart of the city. So, it is something that has been included, and we have made reference to that. On some of the other more specific points, we are keeping a log. We have kept a log of those changes, so we can talk through those changes that are in there. The, sorry, next slide, please. The structure of the report was amended as well on consideration of the points that were made. We wanted to be clearer, really, in terms of the sort of the actions which I think got lost in some of the context. So, the report's structure has changed now, and we've now based this in sort of, there's an introduction area there around what we're doing around the headline priorities, some of the work so far, because I think sometimes we've not been very good at setting out the story and the backstory about some of the things that have already been happening, but also then the opportunities. We then talk about the framework and about some of the short-term priorities, and some of the work that's been undertaken over the next 12 and 18 months, and then there's an appendix to the report which sets out the challenge that we face and outlines the next steps in terms of what we need to do. We are looking at sort of two, in terms of the actions in the 10 points, the next couple of slides, which I'll come on to, talk about how we need to see things through a lens of some of the transformational activities, some of the large-scale changes, but also some of the enabling activities, some of the things that we need to do, both as an organisation in terms of actually how we think, operate, make decisions, but also thinking about actually how we need to transform as a city as well. So, if I can just move on to the next slide, please. So, you'll see, these points here are what we're considering as those transformational priorities. So, this is where we can see some of the outcomes will be, some of the clear results that will come out from that, around, for example, some of the points that were raised in the presentation around things like insulating homes, or how we increase the level of renewable energy that's generated in the city. And some of that may be at small scale, but some of that may also be some of the large-scale programmes as well. Just very briefly, looking at some of the specifics in here, and obviously, we picked up within the plan, but we've tried to make that clearer now in the new version, is that there are points around how we, what action we're taking as a council to reduce carbon now. So, there's a number of projects that we are undertaking as an organisation, whether that's through our public sector decarbonisation scheme, whether that's through some of the local authority delivery programme, where we're insulating 800 homes in the city, and obviously, that's the first step, but we secured funding to undertake that action over the next 12 months. There's also the work that we'll be doing towards a council reducing our emissions to net zero by 2030, and seeking to lead by example as far as possible. One of the big areas will be around the development of the delivery plans. So, this will be those next steps in terms of moving forward from what action's been undertaken this year and over the next 18 months into developing some of the more complex delivery and some of the action that's required to decarbonise the very points that were made earlier around what we are delivering on transport, what we're doing to decarbonise housing in the city, how we're working with business and industry, for example. Linked to that is point eight around actually looking at how we build the skills and the economy that we need for the future. So, we'll continue to be working there with the South Yorkshire Combined Authority, and also with commissioning creatively, looking to see, for example, where there are opportunities through some of our own programmes, where we can actually then look to try and work with local supply chains, for example, and try and stimulate some of that market here within Sheffield, or within the Rider region. And then we'll also be working to see how we can ensure that we have the planning and infrastructure that we need for the future. So, this includes areas around the local plan, for example, how that can support our net-zero ambitions, but also how we look at programmes to expand our decentralised energy networks, and also working with our electricity provider within Northern Power Grid, looking at, for example, electricity grid within the city to make sure that that has the capability to provide the power that we require for the transition. Next slide, please. So, this is the sort of, we've grouped here, the second type of action or priority that may seem, in a sense, less ambitious, some of those ground, you know, the ground announcements may be around some of the investment in electric vehicles, or within the heat networks, or some of the other programmes. But these are clearly, you know, equally as important, and in a sense, transformational in terms of how we transform the organisation. For example, making sure that we put climate at the centre of our decision-making, so that where we are making decisions around, whether it's buying new things, looking at procurement, whether it's some of the governance, we have the programmes internally to make sure that climate and that carbon is taken into those arenas and is considered. So, for example, the creation of a carbon assessment tool that's used by services when they're making decisions, or including that within the service planning, so that this isn't just something that's held by a single team within the council, this is something that runs through the council, and is actually becomes everybody's role in a sense to actually help move us towards net zero. The, obviously, that one of the other points is around actually how we find the funding, the investment that's required to do this. So, there's a work stream around actually how we develop investable propositions, so looking at what the particular areas are that we need to invest in, but also looking at alternative ways of trying to bring money into some of these much-needed, these much-needed programmes. Point five is about, again, how we bring the city together. Clearly, as I outlined at the start, people need to be at the centre of this, so this is about actually how we work in partnership with those anchor institutions, with the voluntary sector, with businesses and with residents, and one of the other questions that came up this morning that wasn't asked specifically was about actually how we can work with the experts in the city, recognising that there are a number of organisations and individuals with expertise, whether that's technical expertise or lived experience, and what we're intending to do is actually use that experience in the city to help shape and develop these delivery plans. We also will work and support people, businesses and organisations to take the actions that's needed, so there's a number of actions there around actually how we work with people to drive that forward. And then the final point on this slide is about preparing the city to adapt for a changing climate, and again, sort of a key message that's coming out from both the work at COP26, but also some of the work we've been involved in with Yorkshire and Humber Climate Commission about the need to look at resilience and how we make sure that our city is resilient to the changes that we are anticipating to experience, both preparing our city infrastructure, but also how we work with our residents and communities and businesses to make sure that we are prepared for those changes. Next slide, please. sure that we are prepared for those changes. Next slide please. So finally, just a couple of slides around the delivery plan and what we mean by the delivery plan itself. I just want to talk very briefly about that. We've talked about the need for delivery plans in some key areas to make sure that we are focusing on those priorities. And what we are intending to develop in these plans is depending obviously on what the focus is, it's going to vary depending on whether this, for example, is looking at electric vehicles, which we'll come on to touch on in a moment, or whether maybe we're looking at housing retrofit, or it could be that we're talking about actually how we're working with business and industry in the city. But an understanding and agreeing some of the technical options and the solutions that are available to us now. And we'll be looking to fund some of those feasibility studies to actually understand what the approaches that we can do, engaging with partners. Because again, clearly this is something that the council can't do on its own and I think has actually been demonstrated by events like the regional COP26 event yesterday at ITM Power, which was co-hosted with the university, that there is a tremendous amount of work that's already been undertaken on this agenda with other organisations. And it's actually how we work to support those organisations and see how we can deliver more from those partnerships. It's also, I think, in some instances, taking policy decisions. So electric vehicles, for example, will require other potential policy changes. And then we'll be talking about delivering pilots and initiatives while that work is ongoing. So this isn't just about developing these delivery plans, it's also about at the same time moving forward on action on the ground. The feasibility work will help create those business cases and those funding strategies and then from that we'll be able to scale the delivery. Because of course, we're talking about the potential to start on some of these small projects, but also for some of those large scale projects and the need to scale some of that up in terms of actually reaching the ambition that's required for us to achieve our net zero ambition. I'm just going to briefly hand over to Tom to talk through the next slide, which talks about the transport strategy and the links to the electric vehicle delivery plan.
Thanks Mark. Good morning everybody. Yeah, this is just to kind of reinforce some of the messages that Mark has mentioned in the previous slide really. So, you know, I think what we're conscious of is that, you know, that the scale of the action required across all of those different key themes is major, it's significant. And the way in which we're going to make a change is by delivering things on the ground, working with partners to do that and setting out clear plans so that we can secure funding, so that we can move forward and make a significant difference. So whilst within the plan, and I think this came up last time round, there is a commitment within this plan to develop delivery plans. It isn't just a plan to develop a plan. The delivery plans are going to be very focused on setting out very clearly how we transition from the pathways report, which sets out a strong evidence base on what we need to do and some of the timescales and issues around that, into how we deliver that change. So for example, we have a transport strategy in the city at the moment that was adopted around three and a bit years ago. That's that's a really clear position in terms of some of the changes that the city needs to make. It then feeds delivery such as our connecting Sheffield programme, which is focused on delivering significant change and improvements to public transport corridors, bus priority measures across the city and some of those significant cycling and walking schemes that we're consulting on at the moment. It references and is fed into the Clean Air Zone and how we need to respond to air pollution, but also broader issues around emissions within the city. So it's identifying the key gaps and where those priorities are so that we can bring forward specific delivery plans to secure funding, to support the rollout of measures. And I think we might get into some of the detailed discussions and obviously the questions this morning have posed a number of detailed questions at a local level and the delivery plans will need to be aligned to the implementation of trials or early stage rollout of some of these schemes. So I think I'll just hand back to Mark now, but we might want to get into some of the detail. We can discuss some of those specifics, but a number of the aspects will flow through the development of the delivery plans, which obviously there'll be further opportunity to engage with committees on in the future and really importantly, our communities, our residents and businesses in the city that will want to understand at a finer level of detail how things such as EV charging strategies, housing retrofits, et cetera, et cetera, will affect and influence what needs to be done.
Thank you, Tom. So that brings us to the end of the first part of the presentation, Chair. We do have a further four slides which we discussed before around potential role for transitional committee. But the next slide, sorry, if we just move to the next slide, it's just feedback and comments on that. And I don't leave that in terms of how you want to take those questions.
Okay, thank you for that. For me, I think a break within the presentation at this stage is helpful because it's a lot for people to take in. I'm looking around the room, is there anybody who wants to raise any specific points at this stage? Councillor, Chris, I'm not going to be formal, Chris, get in there mate, go.
Thank you Chair. Absolutely excellent piece of work being started and done and I'm quite engaged by it. And it's about, when you mentioned the working with partners on the supply chain and other issues like that, one of the, one of the questions, and I'm going to come to it, asked about food sustainability and how we have a situation that in South Yorkshire, we would never be able to sustain food within South Yorkshire to feed the South Yorkshire population. We just haven't got the land to do it. So we see problems with some of the larger supermarkets having supply chain issues as well. How can we, using our markets, which I think, as you know, I'm a big champion of, and wholesale markets, working within the food supply chain, guarantee food security while not increasing or not causing any increase in climate change, carbon, trying to reduce carbon supply in that food chain. The use of rail and canals to transport food is far more efficient than big diesel lorries because you can stick more on a train, you can stick more on a canal barge, especially if it's being pulled by a horse. So there's that element. I had got another thought in my head as well, that I'm not able to put into words at the moment, but it's, how do we make sure that we have that food sustainability and that supply chain secure without increasing any carbon footprint? Oh, can I also say, a lot of the people gone about that we produce too much meat compared with vegetables. And I have no problem with people being vegetarians or vegans or anything. Can I just point out, the food allergies I have are with vegetables and not with meat and fish. So don't try to convince me to become a vegetarian, that's all I'm saying. I eat my vegetables wrapped up in a cow. So, but I do think we do need to reduce the amount of meat we eat. I have tried. Fishing is another sustainability issue. We're not a coastal city. So again, transporting fish from the coast inland sustainably for people to have, that's another issue. So how can we do them sustainably? Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I've got a couple of other members looking to want to come in. I've got six in total at the moment. We've had Chris. I'll take questions from Tim and Diane. Tim, did you want to come in? Yeah. And then Diane, and then if you could answer those questions please, that'd be good.
I think the whole part of this plan is a lot of the stuff that we're going to make the most progress is the stuff that isn't particularly sexy. It's the stuff underneath the radar and it will involve, when you're talking about some of the work doing with the council, it's going to lead a lot more cooperation with small business, et cetera, to make sure that we pick the innovators. I mean, I'm not a great fan of, because government is very good at, you know, as the phrase goes, picking losers, not winners. And councils have been traditionally equally susceptible to that. So basically, what we've got to look at is to use the full force of Sheffield. And talking about food sustainability, I'm a bit, I'm quite relaxed about sustainability and trying to grow your own food in a particular area because the one thing that will make us fall down in any of our climate goals is if people are hungry. As simple as that. If food security has to be there as part of it because if people are hungry, you're going to lose the people. And that's one of the things we need to make sure that we don't do. Because there was a big thing, I was just sort of asking, you know, when I was looking at electric vehicle delivery plans, what happened to our electric refuse truck? Is that still operating? Does that operate, et cetera? Just one, as a side question.
Cheers Tim. I'm sure we'll be able to get those questions done. Diane?
Thank you Chair. And aside before I begin, no wonder Chris lost his thread because he was just teasing me with canals because he knows how much I like the idea of transportation using canals and final mile schemes. I'll leave that there, I can hear him snorting in the background zone, it was right. Right, from the questions from the presentation so far, three things have really hit me. One of the things is about where we can do a lot of, where we can have the most impact for the most people is in housing, the retrofitting, the insulation, how we work with communities, particularly our own stock, to improve that because, you know, it's saving energy, it's increasing people's comfort and it really has an impact. It's one of the real things that we can do to make a difference. And that includes, okay, a bit of a crossover and I do apologise for this, but I want to tell you the story. I've had in my case bag some issues with people who've taken up the solar panel schemes. They've had solar panels installed on their homes. You know, it's free, it seemed like a good idea and they would, they might make a little bit of a gain from it. But for a lot of them, what they didn't expect was the fact that they gained an awful lot of nuisance as well. The fact that, I don't know if it was a kind of scheme or where they were put on, but a lot of people have had an awful lot of issues with pigeons. Pigeons gathering on nice warm south facing roofs on a handy ledge on a solar panel and coming to me and saying, can't use my garden anymore, can't put the washing out because it's just so full of pigeons and they're like, and coming to me saying, how can we remove them? Well, that seems like, that seems counterintuitive. I'm saying, well, I'm sorry, we can't because they're not ours, we had nothing to do, you know, and it seems like it's counterintuitive. And again, yesterday, no, Monday, we were out on planning visits and we were looking at a really satisfying scheme to develop an extra care housing scheme on previously built land to very high sustainability values powered by gas boilers. And questions were asked at the committee when we agreed the application yesterday and several people got into conversations with the architect on Monday. And the thing was, air source heat pumps can be noisy, cannot be very effective, especially when you're looking at extras care scheme where you have frail elderly people who may not be as mobile and need a higher degree of heating. The land allowed for the scheme, I may have got some of this wrong, so I apologise to the office that was talking to, this is just my pracy. The land area allowed for the scheme, the land that we've got to work with, if you're going to have ground source heat pumps, they have to be, it has to be about five times as large as the area you want to heat for them to be effective. And, you know, so we revert back to gas boilers, even though they're more efficient than they used to be, they won't be, they're not as sustainable. So that's the next thing, you know, what can we do to retrofit boilers? We've got to do that, we've got to do it in our stock. Do we need to look to experts and do we need to learn from people who have started down that route? Do we need to take opportunity of the development of the local plan and see what we need to, you know, work, work even across committees to see what we can put in there that truly will have an impact in the long run. And how are we going to communicate all this? We've got round about 60 comments and this is so, so important, a piece of work. We ought to have been, you know, it would have been better if it was 600 or 6,000 because then it would mean that we were hitting people where they lived, where it made sense, where they understood the impacts on their lives. So how are we going to have that dialogue and that communication? And I saw something about likes in there, so I want to explore that more fully. I'm sorry, that's an awful lot of stuff. I've just chucked at your chair and officers, but this is really important. And those headlines came out as I was listening to the questions and the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you Diane. So I'll hand this over to Tom, Victoria and Mark to answer to. Has Sheffield, for starters, has Sheffield broken the electric bin wagon or is it still making progress? So it's getting there. It's a bit like British Rail was and is, or is, I don't know. Right. So it's getting there, but Sheffield's proving a good testbed for these technologies and these demands. Thank you. So at least that one addresses that one directly. All right. So over to you guys for the other extensive plethora of questions there.
Thank you Chair. So I'll just start off with the first question around food and markets and whether there are opportunities around looking at food sustainability. And obviously this picks up the question that the member of the public from Foodworks raised around 30% of our emissions coming from food. And I think one of the, one of the points that was raised around the transport of food obviously identifies that that overall emissions that are coming from food, both locally and depending on where the food is coming from, is there's an element there in terms of transportation. So actually, some of that will also be included within the emissions that we have on transport locally. So looking at sort of how we then try and address some of those challenges. We've, we've been looking within the plan, we've made a proposal around developing a delivery plan specifically looking at food. But I think the other sort of areas that are related to that are looking at our supply chains. So some of the enabling work, looking at, for example, how we develop the carbon impact assessment or looking at making sure that our decisions take into account their climate impact means that, for example, that the points that were raised around working with our markets, our, whether it's our market on the moor or whether it's looking at some of the wholesale markets, again, looking at the opportunities to, through some of those arrangements, actually working commercially, to see whether there's some way of making sure that the food that's been procured and that's been provided there comes from sustainable sources. And looking at those, and looking at those supply chains. As I say, it is obviously, it's an incredibly, an incredibly complex area. And of course, the other area around looking at how we can generate food locally is again, something that we want to explore further in that plan to understand what those opportunities are. There's been work that's been undertaken with a number of organisations and the sort of the opportunities, you know, as was pointed out, that for Sheffield to be sustainable in creating its own food, that may not necessarily be possible. But obviously, what we've got to try and do is understand where are the opportunities across the food supply chain into the city, where can we generate food locally, but where food's coming from other places and when it's coming into the city. What are the opportunities to try and reduce some of those associated emissions from that. And just to finish on the point around those sort of And just to finish on the point around those sort of supply chains into the city, we have, as I understand it, there was some work that was undertaken a few years ago as part of the work around Heart of the City, which we can go back to, which was looking at the potential to use the canal and looking at other opportunities to bring products in from the motorway through some form of consolidation centre for some of the, for some of the new retail within the city centre. But again, that might be something we want to, to, to review as part of the delivery plan and see whether that's something that fits in, particularly with that decarbonisation element around transport and trying to avoid a lot of those white vans that are moving around the city.
I hope this is working. Yes, I think this food issue is one of the areas where there's a lot of work we can do with partners. So for example, the Sheffield Halling University, I think it is, has a, has a food institute, and it's really at the forefront of a lot of innovation around kind of modern food growing techniques. And we have some businesses in the city that are working in that area. I know, for example, I think there's one in, in Kellam where food is grown underground, which I've learnt about recently. So there's lots of opportunities, so both kind of from the low tech and people kind of growing food on their own kind of balconies, but also really, really some high-tech innovative business opportunities as well.
Sorry, I, I think Victoria makes a really, really strong point there. I mean, the, the question that we had from Rene earlier, I think, he's, he's, he's involved in Chef Food, which is a significant partnership and network across the city. And in terms of kind of the council's involvement in that, I think it is kind of working with those networks, not just Chef Food, but across the city on different things, and, and building them where they might not exist, so that we can really focus on delivery and change. The, the councils, you know, we're not a food producer, but, you know, it's identifying those things that we can do to support those existing partnerships and networks to, to kind of, to, to kind of develop further action for change. So it might be discussions around kind of our rural estate strategy in, in the context of, 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 of food and sustainable food in the city. There will be various things that we will want to have further discussions with them on. And, you know, I think it, it highlighted to me at the weekend, at the event, that the council ran in Kellam for COP26, what a significant network that is, and, and some really strong and positive work is already happening across the city in that space. So again, some of this, you know, the way we work across the city, the way we communicate across the city is to, to expose some of that and some, some of the opportunities for people to get involved in, in those networks as well, to, to expand their reach, and, you know, that's, that's certainly part of our role, working with partners.
Thank you. Everyone's content with the answers given? Doug, did you want to make a comment there?
Yeah, just a couple of words. I mean, I, I think the, the important thing here is, you know, that there are some big issues on climate change that, you know, is worth focusing on, because it's easy to get distracted by the horse drawn barges on the couch. Really good idea for lots of other reasons, but actually, we're talking about, you know, big things are housing, and especially housing insulation and transport. You know, it's going back to those three main sectors. And just, I suppose I want to reinforce the idea of actually not reinventing everything that, but just doing the stuff that we know works well and works efficiently in large ways. But on, on food, I mean, I think it's really interesting that, you know, with, although there's actually a lot of innovation going on in the city, you know, I think the point that running from Foodworks will make is that fundamentally it comes back to transport when you want to look at the issue at scale. And if you think about, you know, the situation of, you know, say flying in apples from Argentina, when you look at the huge amount of emissions involved in the aviation or the shipping sectors, because we buy things from supermarkets that come in that way. So it comes down to the choices that we make here that drive those, where actually apples grow pretty well in Sheffield. And, you know, if we can boost the local economy, or we can contribute to, you know, large-scale worldwide emissions, and that's a choice. The worst thing, as Rene will point out, is when we buy the apples and then a week later we throw them away. And this point is about the 30% of food that's bought but not eaten. So there's, there's certainly not a shortage of food, there is a huge oversupply of overconsumption.
Thank you. With regards to Diane's questions on housing and the very challenging issues faced there, where there is a willingness to move to the newer technologies and to make housing decarbonised, however, it's not always the case. And certainly I've seen solar panels where birds have been roosting on, on TV aerials above them, and they do get defecated on, and that obviously decreases the efficiency of those panels significantly. What, what have we got in, in terms of our experience to address some of those issues?
So I, I think that the main point that I'd make is, in terms of the options that are available to people, I think one of our key roles, clearly we'll have a role in terms of delivering some of those improvements to homes across the city, particularly where the, the council is, is landlord and that, that direct responsibility and role, that there, there is the, the kind of wider position though. So there's a range of technologies that are available, and I think one of our roles is, is trying to bring some clarity to, to what those are and signpost people to points where they can get the, the right information. So we've probably all had discussions with, with different people about kind of different technologies, whether that's, you know, solar panels or whether it's heat pumps. It's that understanding and the knowledge that we need to get to the truth of the matter. There, there may well be technical issues that, that come up through discussions that we have with people, but the, the heart of the information for people to take informed choices about how they heat their homes, how they insulate, that is, that is, that's the kind of real nub. There may well always be the occasional issue around pigeons or something else, but fundamentally in terms of the changes that are required, the, the kind of positives, the negatives, the honest approach, we need to signpost people to where they can find that information and kind of make informed choices for themselves, as much as we will have a role in rolling out kind of infrastructure and change to certain buildings across the city.
Thank you. Martin, you were looking to come in specifically on that point.
Thank you, Chair, yes. It was specifically on the, the food waste issue that people, a few of us picked up. My career, 35 years in, in the food industry, so I just want to agree with councillor Johnson on one point, that the biggest thing, single thing we can do as a country to improve food security is not throw food away. And that improves our environmental footprint, but also we shouldn't, we need to go further. So I know food waste collection and recycling, so some food will inevitably be wasted because it goes off, but we need to recover the energy from that. So as a city, food waste collection, recycling, energy recovery is something we should be actively looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Tim, you were looking to come back?
Yeah, the food, the food waste thing is when people, you know, anybody who's had young children knows that there's either I was trying to eat the food waste for them and that had a direct impact on my own health, or it was being thrown away. But the one thing about food waste selections, collections is that as people see the amount of waste, the food they're wasting, it tends to go down over time. But that's just a slight digression. So I was going to talk about transport. And one of the things which is above our pay grade that we can't do is, is the decarbonisation of shipping anyway, because there are going to be ships around the world. And one of the things that we need to also have a look at, and that's why, why, is to look at the rail network as well, because one of the big things is the more trucks, et cetera, we can get on our, on our rail system, and at the moment there are capacity constraints that stop us. You know, the big cell on HS2 was taking 20 minutes off Birmingham to London, and the whole thing should have been about how much it frees up capacity for us to be able to get around, get, to get much more stuff, freight onto rail, so that we can get it to, to transport heads, and then we can really look at the last mile or two of delivery. And that's what we need to really be, you know, that's what we can do with Sheffield if we can put that infrastructure base, that last mile, the last two miles, the other stuff, that's incumbent on this government, which, you know, will say grand things and then do absolutely nothing.
And I guess by that you also include the light rail network and the tram. So yes, thank you on that one. So I don't know that we necessarily need our officers to come back on those points. So what I'll do is, Chris wants to come back in and then I'll bring in Abdi Sam and Paul, if that's okay. Come, Chris.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just on, on the rail. Memory serves, 2005, we were promised electrification all the way up to Midland Station and electrification from Manchester to Doncaster. Those things have been scrapped. And then we said, oh, we'll have these hybrid trains, which is all well and good if you live in Bedford and towards London, you get your own electricity. But north of Bedford, it's a diesel, that you get the same pollution that you do now. We've, we probably need the support of the city region on this, the mayor, to get that electrification and, and thing. But it's, that, that would be one way of reducing pollution, because the, the Shig Valley, when you've got three or four trains going off, disappears in a black cloud, it really, even though they are more efficient diesel engines than they've previously been. And just say thank you on, on the issues around food security, food sustainability. They are important. And I think it's, it's, it does tie in with, with, with how we insulate our homes, how we move about the city, how we move about the country. So it, it is, it is all tied up, all interconnected. It's, it's a big challenge for people. It's going to be your challenge next year because I won't be here. But it's, it's, I will be doing my bit of, of keeping food waste down. I've always tried to keep food waste down. But it, it is a, a, a big issue that even when I won't be a councillor, it's still something that we'll be probably involved with. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Abdi Sam, could I bring you in for your questions and then Paul, please?
Thanks, Chair. Trying to remember my questions. Okay, so mine are more clarifications on, on where we're going. So I understood from Doug and the points that he made that the, the priorities are going to be around housing and transport, which makes sense. As I was reading the report and listening to, to what was said, I couldn't really see any specifics about businesses, especially, especially sort of the smaller businesses, given that they're the majority in Sheffield, and how we're actually going to take them forward on the journey other than the grants that we're giving them to, to do the sort of the exploration about reducing their own emissions. So I think going forward is just what are the specifics in relation to businesses? How are we going to make it so it's viable for them, especially the, the small businesses who are perhaps already struggling to stay open? And we're already a, a sort of a, a city of two halves anyway. How are we going to make sure that this isn't just about the people who can, who will, and making sure that those who can't are supported? Because I saw a quote in, in, in the, the sort of the, the presentation about making sure that this is equitable and inclusive, taking people on the journey with us. But there'll be lots of people who will struggle to, to, to ensure that they, they meet the requirements, and some perhaps it's not even on their radar as well. So how are we going to make sure that we take people on the journey with us, but also don't make it detrimental financially for, for individuals and, and communities as well? Finally, I know that these are sort of the broad sort of points that we're looking at. When are we going to, is this perhaps maybe for future meetings or maybe the committee was, it's in, in action for the specific actions to come through? How are we sort of holding ourselves to account on, on, on measurable targets? And I think that came out in a lot of the questions as well, about the specifics. How do we know that we're working towards the specific outcomes? And finally, on, on the food waste issue, this is a point of clarity. Does the environment, environmental bill sort of, is that going to introduce bins for food waste going forward? I read something about that being compelled, and is that going to be for every household? Do you have to buy the bin? And it's again, for those families that can afford to do so? So how are we making sure that this is equitable and that those that financially can't are supported on that journey? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Abdi Sam. There's a lot in there, so before I bring Paul and, and Martin in, do you want to answer those questions? Because there is quite a few in there, and then I'll bring, bring the other guys in, if that's okay.
So I, I'll start, I'll, I'll hand over, I'll hand over to, to, to Mark and Victoria in a second. Just on the point about rail briefly. So, so yes, electrification of the Midland Main Line was previously announced and, and cancelled and announced and, and cancelled, and, and we are still kind of one of the very few major cities in the UK with no electric services serving us. And you may be aware that at the moment, that the government are reviewing its position around high-speed rail. They're doing that in the context of what the North and the Midlands requires, and they're going to be launching an integrated rail plan to cover their, their position in terms of that review in the coming weeks. So, you know, there, there have been headlines around what the announcements in relation to that integrated rail plan might involve, but we will have to wait and see what the, the outcome is. But in terms of the, the need for electrification as a minimum, it, it's absolutely there. And I think, given the fact that there were announcements and then cancellations of that programme, it's been a requirement for a number of years. In, in terms of the, the plan and kind of, kind of the priorities, so we, we do set out within the plan some of those focused areas where we're going to be making a difference. But for example, in terms of transport and the decarbonisation of transport, there will be aspects where obviously it's going to be extremely important for us to, to work with businesses and to, to kind of get them to understand what those, those issues are and the changes that might, that, that we need to, to consider. The support will come in different ways. So as part of the Clean Air Zone decision, we have funding which we can support small businesses to upgrade their fleets of vehicles. And there will be financial support that we'll be launching in the spring associated with some of that. But the delivery plans will need to look across the actions that are required within the city and the who, the how and the what. There's a microphone, sorry. Need to be developed as part of those delivery plans. And again, as a key focus, I'm sure, in terms of the discussions at future committees, where some of the potentially policy implications or funding and, and strategies around that to make the change required, I'm sure there'll be further discussions and there'll be much further discussions with, with people that, that need to be engaged in making some of those changes. In terms of some of the qualities issues, if I could bring Victoria and Mark in, in a second on, on some of those. In terms of the holding to account, in terms of the outcomes, again, a relatively high level, we'll be set out that there will need to be that, that monitoring, that feedback to, to monitor, to, to, to set out how the city is performing, how the council is performing. And, and obviously within the development of delivery plans, there will be programmes of activity that, that we will be setting out. Each of those individual programmes and the projects within them will also have some of that, those targets, and, and that again, will be monitored and we can report to, to the committees and to the public in terms of, of what we're doing and how that progress is being made. Clearly, some of those direct responsibilities that we'll have in terms of action and rolling them out are in relation to some of the things that council will be doing. There is that broader change across the city as well, which will be picked up in some of the monitoring that we're doing. Food waste and the environment bill, having had a meeting just this week, we did touch on some of the, the waste issues. I'll have to, we'll have to confirm in terms of the, the final, when that transitions from a bill into an act, what the, the position on household, household food waste is, unless Mick, I'm looking at now. So all of the statutory requirements arising from the bill, when it becomes an act, we, 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 we will need to take those on board. We're setting out at the moment some of the, the, the work that's We're setting out at the moment some of the work that's required to effectively manage the actions that that means we're going to have to kind of roll out within the city council. And again, the monitoring of those, the implementation of those is all part of that planning approach at the moment. If I could hand over to Mark or Victoria on some of the kind of equalities issues arising from that.
I'm happy to talk on some of the equalities issues. And so a lot of this is about how we work and the policies, decisions that are taken by the organisation. There's a lot of work that's already going, already taking place. For example, the local area delivery fund work that we're doing to retrofit, improve insulation in homes. That is focused specifically on people who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to carry out that work. And there's further bids that are in place at the moment to get more funding in to help people who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to retrofit their homes. Obviously, a lot of the work that we do around public transport and increasing active travel, again, will have benefits for people who wouldn't otherwise necessarily be able to afford to have a car. If we can improve the public's transport systems for everybody in the city, then it benefits those who don't have cars or can't access cars more than it would do those who currently have them. For example, the climate assessment tool that we're going to be developing, that will include an element on looking at equalities so that as well as making sure that decisions that we're taking reduce carbon impact, but they also don't detrimentally affect people who either can't afford to take action or have disabilities or various other equalities issues. So there's a lot of work to do still. So I think also in other areas is really co-producing the interventions we're working, we're developing, which hopefully means they will work for everybody in Sheffield, rather than presuming that the interventions we can design as officers without speaking to people will work. I think that's another area where we can really look to improve this as well.
Yes, Mark, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to just come in on a couple of points that Tom was making about business and working with SMEs. And obviously, you mentioned the business grant, the work that's going on with the low-carbon business support grant that's currently being rolled out. Obviously, that is a starting point. And so some of the work that's going on at the moment is that we're having conversations with both the Chamber of Commerce and also with the Sheffield Sustainable Business Network around some of the work that they're doing, but also how we can work together with them to try and maximise the uptake. So working through some of our other networks like Business Sheffield and promoting some of that work more widely across the city. And obviously, trying to reach some of those businesses that wouldn't necessarily be involved in some of those organisations. The Chamber are looking to establish a network themselves. So again, sort of seeing how we can partner and work with them to try and maximise that is going to be really important. But we're also looking to see actually how we can support, you know, what opportunities are there to try and support local businesses through some of the funding that's been made available through different government programmes, like the Industrial Energy Transformation Fund. And again, we anticipate that that work through that delivery plan that focuses on how we support business industry will pick up some of those opportunities. We'll be looking to see where we anticipate new finance, new money that's coming from government. And in one sense, signposting businesses to that where possible, you know, if there's resource holding hands a bit, but also seeing where there are other organisations in the city that can do that handholding, that we're linking people up. And I think finally, the other thing just to mention is we're also working with the universities, in particular the University of Sheffield at the moment, who are developing a South Yorkshire Sustainability Centre with the aim around a number of different areas, including things like food, which we've touched on, but also support to businesses. Because some of the requirements around their grants are actually real-world impacts and how can you channel the work, the research that's going on into real applications and how can we try and use that to support businesses here in the city?
Go on, Abdi Sam. Yeah, and now bring Doug in.
Thank you. Just on that point very quickly, how are we working within local district centres? So I know that some of the businesses that we have in our area in Firth Park are not aware of any of this or are not aware of any agendas or sort of funding that's available. And there isn't a specific person within the council that I can bring in to talk to them or to talk to them about grants or any support that's being offered. So that group of businesses, just getting them to a meeting in the area is hard enough because of the level of work that they're inputting into their own businesses. So in a practical sense, you know, these aren't people that would have the time. So we need to be as given as possible and as supportive as possible to take them with us on that journey. But just using Firth Park as an example, we've probably got about 80 local small businesses there that aren't aware of anything and it just, you know, it requires me to think of who can I bring to engage them?
Okay, just, yeah, I think that's a good point again about actually how we bring people with us on this journey. And obviously, like you say, there's lots of smaller businesses that don't necessarily have the staff or the time to be able to attend events and try and pick up some of this information. I think what, you know, we need to take that back and be looking at actually how we make sure that we tailor the solutions to those sorts of circumstances. One of the things that we have started through the conversations with the Lax, with the chairs to look at the way that we can support them. Now, obviously, we're a small team, but what we can do and what we said we'll provide is an update in terms of grants or information and try and provide an update on some of that information that can be circulated to people within that community, whether that's businesses or whether it's residents, about, for example, housing grants that might become available through the LAD programme. And trying to use that route and then if there's the opportunity to have some of those conversations, then I think we need to see how we can resource that to try and move some of this forward. And also speaking to colleagues in Business Sheffield as well about some of those opportunities.
Thank you. Doug, you wanted to come in briefly there?
Yeah, just a couple of points, one on equalities and one on measurable outcomes. Just restating first of all the idea that actually dealing with climate justice is also social justice. And just looking at Sheffield, two principal reasons for that is, yeah, one is that, you know, the more affluent sectors, community consume more, spend more on international flights, buy more expensive stuff than a bigger portion is thrown away. And it's really interesting to look at the maps of emissions of CO2 across the city. Be very familiar to anyone who sees all the usual maps of the east-west divide there. But secondly, with, you know, that house insulation, you know, tried and tested method that really makes a big, big difference, you know, at scale of reducing carbon emissions, also makes people's houses warmer, therefore cheaper to heat, therefore fewer health problems. You know, it's a win-win all round. So, you know, just focusing on the basics is a really important thing, but it is incredibly important for, you know, equality. But just an example of that, I mean, it is quite tricky. And Victoria mentioned the home insulation schemes, which are underway at the moment and that's a really good thing. We're getting money in from central government to insulate people's houses in Sheffield, to owner-occupied ones, often, you know, excluded from other grants and things. But just within that, there's the equalities issue. And I remember flagging this up because I'm saying, what's the mechanism for deciding, you know, how those grants are allocated? There's never enough to go round. The criteria mean that people on low incomes, you can still have people in, you know, quite big, big drafty houses in Dorra or something, where it might be, you know, an older person living on their own, actually on a low income, but that's okay because they don't need a lot because everything's paid for. Equally, you've got, you know, say, you know, Bangladeshi couple living in a bungalow in Darnall with a kind of weird constructed roof. Both of those can jump in to apply for the grants. But if the criteria for the grants is first come, first served, very strictly, then actually you do build an equalities issue in there because there are some people who are going to be much more keyed in to, A, finding out about these grants when they become available and then, secondly, having the ability to apply for them. Set against that is the practical issue about how officers are going to administer this. But I think it's really important that we don't lose sight of things like that so that when we get these schemes, which are fundamentally good schemes, and if you just get more houses insulated, that's better than not have them insulated. But it's really important to bring in the equality side too. And just on the measurable outcomes, I mean, the thing I keep saying is that actually we need to not get too hung about it despite what we've been saying about, you know, it is important to measure things and it is. But the risk here is that we, as councillors, spend a lot of time asking officers to go where and measure things and count things and report on them, which can take them away from actually getting stuff done. So it's just a sort of word of warning to us. On the bigger scale, because of course, CO2 emissions, they're all over the place. It's very hard to pinpoint where they come from. There's lots to be said for the fact that it's better done at the national scale and Department of Business nationally does annual returns of, you know, where the CO2 emissions are coming from. And it's a bit like looking at the overall aggregate of Covid deaths. It's probably better to look at that on a broader picture than to spend time trying to count where each bit of CO2 comes from, each Covid death comes from, by attributing to its location in Sheffield. Yeah, just a warning of that.
Thank you, Doug. That's quite an interesting movement away from a lot of the activists that have been asking that we measure here in Sheffield rather than relying on national stuff. I think it is helpful to make sure that we can do what we can do, but we're also clear with others. One of the things I'd like to pick up on is when you look on the map of the emissions, and I know I picked this up with Victoria in conversations, the map, if you were going for equality, would suggest that you'd invest more in the side of the city that's more affluent. However, I'm always mindful that those with the most money can spend the money upfront on insulating their houses and they then get the greatest return on savings of those costs, whereas those with no money never get a chance to stay up and they just get the escalating bills. So equality needs to replace the word, equitability needs to replace the word equality. And that needs to be at the front and foremost of all our considerations. And also, in terms of, as you rightly say, the access to the information, if you're not able to find the information, you're never going to know it's there to help you. So we need to not look at hard-to-reach communities, but say we are underserving those communities. I think that needs to be foremost in our thoughts as well. I'll bring in Paul, Martin and Ben Barber, if that's okay, unless there are questions or manifest, in which case I might split them off. And then Diana, I'll bring you at the end of this, okay? Thank you, Paul.
Thanks very much, Mark. I've got a few points to make, so I'll try to be brief. But on the subject of equality, I was thinking that the two or two of the most devastating constructs of humanity, climate change and war, are both inherently racist. And they're racist because people of colour overwhelmingly bear the negative impact of them. And so I'm really hopeful that when we develop the comprehensive impact assessment that Victoria alluded to earlier, that it will take that into account and show the devastated impact on people of colour from climate change. I think, you know, the task of becoming net zero or carbon zero or whatever phrase you choose to use, to me, it's kind of irrelevant, is that it's just so mammoth that we have to try and do everything we can. And I've been in meetings with housing officers who have removed solar panels from planning applications, not applications, from buildings the council is planning to build to save money. I've spoke to them when they have an aversion to insulating more than the current building regs to save money. And so when we have a zero-carbon target, it doesn't matter where those savings come from, they have to come from everywhere. And if we turn our nose up at a saving on one project, it's only going to have to be saved from another. So we really mustn't turn down any opportunities to cut carbon and we must constantly try to be better. We're talking about changing the culture of the council and also the changing the culture of Sheffield. And, you know, part of that is through training, which we've begun doing with officers and members. And I think that's going really well and I really want that to be rolled out as quickly as possible, you know, we're in a hurry. And I think by training and the impact assessment tool, I think that is how we embed the climate emergency into the council by bringing everybody up to speed, putting everyone on the same page. But in the meantime, I see that we don't have enough resources, human resources, and the team that you work in, it's too small for what needs to be done. And it might be fine to have a team the size of yours if everybody in the council is on the same page. But while they're not, while there's so much needs to be done, I think you need more staff. And then I think when we talk about including the public and how we can't do this on our own, I think that we could be exploring options of a kind of volunteer army. You know, you can see how popular this subject is from our 50-odd questions and also half a dozen emails, that the desire is there from members of the public to make a difference. And where we had a retired doctor coming in, you know, I've had people approach me saying, offering to be an unpaid intern to help me and not a student intern, a retired person who wants to help. And I think that that could be, I think it's worth exploring the possibility of that. Continuing with that theme of including everybody and how essential that is, I would like that all of the questions that we have that will be answered at some point are saved in a public record online that's permanently accessible to the public, but also is permanently open for further questions. Because, you know, we are still very much at the beginning of the journey, but if we can keep going and gathering pace in five years, the things we'll be discussing in this chamber are likely to be a bit different. And also on that public record, I would quite like to have a record of what we've done so far and what we're going to do in the next year. Because, I mean, I absolutely back the 10-point plan, I think it's great. But like some of the criticisms that have been levelled, which were maybe fairly or unfairly, it doesn't say what we're going to do. So, you know, to have a list, an infographic that says in the next year we will insulate so many houses, we will reduce the carbon by so much from vehicles, you know, so whatever the things we are in, and really show clearly that we are acting and that we have a plan to act. So I hope that that was not complete jumbled garbage. Thank you.
I don't think it was jumbled garbage at all, Paul. Thank you for that. There were some observations in there and comments as much as questions, but I did notice from the presentation that you gave previously, you said that you would log a log of suggestions, which very much speaks to one of the latter points that Paul made there. I was going to suggest that all the questions that we've had today be put on that log of suggestions and that log of suggestions be actioned as soon as possible because we've got a lot of contributions today from within this chamber and from across the city. And it would be helpful to start actually populating that information given because if you create a word cloud from that log, it does then show us what the public wants and what the public priorities are. And if we then have an equal word cloud of what the council's saying and what the council priorities are, we'll be able to directly compare, correlate as to whether the council's got the right head on or not. Because invariably, the many voices of the public will have more to say and write things to say than we within here. So I think there's a very powerful tool there that we should be developing. In terms of Paul's other points, I don't know whether you'd want to come in with the things before I bring in the other members because there was a lot there. There were some comments, more than anything, but if there's any other specific points officers would like to address, then I'd welcome those right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think some of them were comments and I think hopefully the 10-point plan does reflect a number of those issues, the cultural changes you mentioned, the need for that training, embedding, the kind of tools that we need to make sure that we can follow those, not just the decisions that we take within the council, but also influencing at early enough stage those actions and programmes that come forward. Because sometimes it's too late when it's at that key decision point. So those are included within the plan. So those are included within the plan. Absolutely take points, as discussed earlier, around, you know, the equalities and how we kind of reflect that within the plan. I think really kind of interesting point there around how we motivate people and potentially that kind of, the action from volunteers and others, and I think that's something we can take away and consider, particularly how that might be influencing some of the delivery approach that we take. In terms of capturing the questions that are provided today, clearly we'll be providing those written responses to go to individuals, and I think capturing those and publishing those, there is a need for us to update our website and some of the information that we're able to signpost people to as part of that. So I think potentially capturing some of those issues and that log and that kind of, obviously we want people to be able to access and kind of raise issues with us, how we do that through our digital channels in particular is going to be really important, I think. And, you know, I think that's probably where we'll look to kind of embed some of those issues in. In terms of specifics, again, the 10-point plan does try and set out some of those things that we will be doing, that mainly focus over the next 12, 18, 24 months, but it's not a comprehensive kind of detailed programme of the outcome. So again, we'll take that away in terms of what the 10-point plan sets out, in terms of the approach, the principles, and establishing those and adopting those as an authority, and then the kind of programmes of activity that then flow from that, some of the things that are already in train, things that we will be doing, funding secured, some of the things that we will then need to be developing in line with the delivery plans and the priorities that come from that. So, yeah, we'll take that away as well in terms of being able to capture some of those key information about what we are doing, what we're committed to do, and how we can communicate that kind of effectively.
Thank you, Tom. Mark, if you could, because I want to bring Martin in, and then Barbara and Diane, and move on to the second part if we can.
Thanks, Joe. I'll keep it very brief. It was just in terms of demonstrating that we are moving forward on some of this at the moment, so there is a meeting that's later today, in fact, with the Human Resources leadership team to talk specifically about that issue around training and actually how we get this rolled out across the council. As you said, we've had that session with members at the beginning of the year, and we have had a further conversation, or we had an event, which was a whole day with the leadership team, so with Kate Josephs and 25 or so of the other directors, about a month or so ago. And now we're now looking at how we can then start to embed this across the rest of the council, look at the opportunities to put this within our learning and development programmes and within service planning and so on.
Thank you, Mark. Martin, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Joe. I'm renowned for my patience. I'm really glad the conversation got around to equalities, because the report and presentation are really very good, but the glaring omission in it, for me, was it didn't actually say anything specific about what we're doing to assess the equality's impact of an excellent 10-point plan. I also want to take the opportunity of politely suggesting to colleagues that maybe we should avoid sweeping geographic generalisations. Out in the South West, we don't all live in big drafty houses. In my ward, there are pockets of poverty, people there rely on food banks, not as many as other areas, but they still do, and this is an issue that impacts on everybody in all parts of the city. The point I wanted, two points I wanted to make, the reason why I feel so strongly about the need for a really rigorous equalities assessment, and then a plan for the mitigation steps that we're going to take as a result of that, is illustrated. So half of the people with questions today that came in to talk to us, half of those raised equalities issues. You look at the written questions we've got, just a quick check, 20, 25% minimum are talking about equalities issues. And they're not just economic. So as somebody that represents the ward with the highest average age population in the city, one of the things I would like to see is a proper evaluation of how the elderly and potentially infirm are going to be impacted by this, and the mitigation steps that we can take, particularly around transport. We had the lady earlier on talking about how it might, changes to the transport modes and services might impact on her. I know Douglas has had several people asking questions at full council, so it's not, I suppose the short version is, it's not just about money. So the elderly, which I'm nearly there, sometimes we struggle with technology. I'm lucky, I've got two kids in their 20s, they help me when I can't work out how to do something. Other people may be less fortunate. So, yeah, the specific question was, before this goes to the executive, will that comprehensive review of the equality's impact and proposals for mitigation, will that be part of the package that goes to the executive? Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. And to follow up from what Martin said, one of the questions that stood out for me was question 35 in our list, which was, is this just another tax on working class to keep them down? Which is a very stark way of putting it, but a very appropriate way of, I think, addressing it. So, yes, I would love to hear the answers on that. Go on, Doug.
I mean, I think actually, Martin, you have a fair point there. I just want to repeat what I was saying before, dealing with climate change is also dealing with social justice. Again, just focus on the big things that make a difference. Insulate the houses, that actually has a massively positive impact on people in all sorts of disadvantaged groups. Sorting out transport, moving resources, one way or the other, whether it's council resources or generally into more shared, good quality, public transport and things that are affordable, and walking cycling, which are cheap, and away from so much reliance on private ownership of private vehicles, where you're obviously massively advantaged in the more that you can afford. And it's very interesting hearing about, you know, the question earlier on about, you know, the big increase in big SUVs, the big gaskels. So actually, yeah, it's a really important issue. And I'm completely on board with what you say, and also, of course, what you say about fully recognising that, you know, there are plenty of people in quite low income, seeing Doran Topley, and it is important they don't get overlooked. What I was referring to when talking about the maps was about the aggregate when you look at, you know, the group areas. So it's, you know, that well-known issue about spatial geography.
So, Mark, Tom, Victoria, if you'd like to, I think specifically the questions about the impact assessments and the impact assessments on equitability and equality.
Yeah, and is that going to be part of the package when it goes to the executive? So, in short, yes, we'll be doing an equalities impact assessment on the 10-point plan. I think it's worth highlighting that, as we've discussed today, some of those principles are quite high-level, and it then flows through in terms of as the delivery plans or some of the actions are taken forward, that as part of the implications on those individual projects or programmes or delivery plans, then again, at those stages, that we are looking at the equality impacts associated with the more specific details as those emerge. So there will be an assessment of the 10-point plan. It's likely that some of those issues that it will flag are broad at this stage, and some of the mitigation, some of the specific impacts will obviously flow from the further work that we take forward. But that commitment is there in terms of that it will flow through that process. And obviously, the need to kind of inform our actions from equalities impact assessment is a similar point I made in terms of councillor Turpin's kind of issue there in terms of an impact assessment on kind of the climate impact, the carbon impacts of decisions. If it's just right at the end, then clearly those opportunities to influence what comes forward could be missed. So it needs to be embedded through the process.
Thank you. Barbara?
Right, well, I was getting quite concerned that there was no mention of public transport, so thank you, Victoria, for bringing that up, which was after raising this. Now, so there was a lot in the action plan about it, but there's been very little discussion about it until the last sort of few minutes, so you are obviously trying to decarbonise that, but I'm satisfied that things are being looked at. The other thing was, it's, I mean, Dr Noor raised the question of SUVs. Now, it doesn't matter where you go in Sheffield, people love their cars. SUVs are a status symbol, it's a cultural thing. And I can quite understand why people go for these, but what I'm saying is that because communication and we're after a cultural shift, this is one of those cases where maybe you could be looking at ways of shifting people's perception of what is appropriate for a city centre. Now, I think the way the CAS has been set up is that's a missed opportunity for something like this, and you cannot penalise people for buying something that suits their needs now, you know, but again, it's looking at how you communicate to get that nudge factor so that when sort of we're more knowledgeable about sort of the damage, well, we accept that the damage they do for all sorts of reasons, it's not just their carbon footprint, it's the actual wear and tear on the road, the spaces, I mean, sort of Dr Noor sort of explained a few more. Then I'd like some, I'd like reassurance that you are looking at ways of communicating which will encourage people to change their behaviour, and that's just an example. And the other point about CAS is, I mean, sort of, come on, the prevailing winds, the whole of Britain is South West to North East, therefore, anything that gets sort of deposited on the western fringes, which is the affluent areas, all accumulates in the city centre and then gets pushed towards Rotherham. And I do remember sort of when I first came to Sheffield, how nice it was to be on the hilltops and watching the smogs slowly rolling out sort of towards the North East. So, again, I think I feel that because of the amount of vehicles used all over Sheffield, we are being unfairly targeted as being causing all the pollution in the South West, whereas it's just a contributory factor multiplied by the topography and the wind direction. So that is, please, sort of stop dividing the city. We are a divided city for all sorts of reasons, but it's not because we're divided on our willingness to actually try to tackle climate change and getting all of Sheffield moving forward. And it disheartens me when I hear so many comments, it's jibes. So thank you, Martin, for bringing that up as well.
Thank you, Barbara. I do always find it perplexing, I'm never sure whether it's a sign of a pessimist or not, when I see an SUV with a bike stuck on the back. If you've got a bike, just use it.
Well, that's the whole point. I mean, there's a lot of people sort of in the city centre who actually sort of make a virtue of cycling everywhere, but they will then put their bike on their vehicles to take out to the countryside and sort of, yeah, so it's not a simple issue.
It's not. I guess most of that's for note internally in terms of the, but the public transport was specifically?
Oh, yes, I mean, I'm a huge believer in public transport, get that right, and a lot of the other things fall into place. But it's also looking at messaging. If we want to get people on board, sort of, as I say, the, there was a lot of talk about the nudge factors some time ago, and it's sort of looking at how we can nudge people to move the way they are going, because, I mean, most of them, sort of, you can't blame people, they're trying, they've got to live their lives, full stop, you know, earn their bread, and sort of to talk esoterically about climate change, well, what's in it for me? And there's so much negativity about climate change, we can't do anything, why bother? And of course, we've got to bother. So it's getting the messaging, and I do worry sometimes about the messaging and how to get it right so that we can deliver comfortably in a few years' time when we've got things in place in the council. So, yeah, communications.
Thank you, Barbara.
So if I could bring Victoria in on some of the broader behaviour change issues in terms of the work that we're looking at there, and I'll come in in terms of some of the specific issues around transport in that area, if that's all right, Victoria?
Yeah, we will be doing a lot more work on communication and engagement, so we're going to be looking at setting up a website. And the messaging that we need to work on is quite complicated, because different messaging works for different people, so there is going to be quite a lot of work that needs to happen around that. I was looking at Tom actually, because I understand that there is actually quite a lot of work done around kind of behavioural economics around the CAS work already, so I'm sure he can talk in a bit more detail about that. But our public health team also does a lot of work in this area, and actually, one of my tasks for later this afternoon is to set up a meeting specifically about looking what we can do on behavioural economics and nudging people to change behaviour, both through communication, but also through kind of making it easier for people to make the right decisions and decisions that need to happen. Yes, absolutely, this is an area we're going to be working on.
Thank you. So in terms of some of the clean air and wider, specific transport issues around that, I think transport is one of those really interesting issues on this agenda in that kind of the reductions that we've seen in time in terms of emissions that contribute towards climate change, transport is one of those areas that has been relatively static over time, you know, some of the bigger reductions have come from some of those other sectors. In part, I think that probably is because of the amount of personal choice that comes into that, to transport decisions. It really is individual choices that lead to some of those aspects, but that's not to say that there isn't, there aren't things that we can do to influence that. One of the challenges around clean air has been the need to take action in the shortest time possible, that was the legal direction that we had. And in relation to that, that did highlight that we needed not just to promote kind of positive alternatives, but we did need to take that action around the carrot and the stick, and that the charging requirements in relation to the clean air zone were required in order to make that change as quickly as possible, and that it was directly influencing emissions from tailpipes in that example. But there is that wider behaviour change focus around transport that we will be bringing forward. There are specific pieces of work that have influenced the clean air zone, there's wider pieces of work that are ongoing. Naturally, encouraging people onto more sustainable modes is a key part of this. The report and the appendix highlight the scale of the change in terms of the levels of private car usage in the city that will be required moving forward, and they are significant. So part of this is absolutely looking at how we can make a change and positive improvements to our bus network across Sheffield and cycling and walking as well, which have a number of wider positive outcomes. So, you know, there are actions and activity that is ongoing, working collectively across the region, where we need to influence public transport, but there's things that in Sheffield we will be taking forward in partnership with operators and the PTE and the city region to make changes on our networks as well. And we've recently had an announcement through the budget about an additional £570 million coming into South Yorkshire, which is extremely positive. It will enable us to roll out further measures on our connecting Sheffield programme, directly aimed at kind of sustainable modes. So the position that we're in is that, yes, the way in which we communicate some of these issues to people across Sheffield and how we move around Sheffield is going to be extremely important, and getting that right will be a challenge, but there's a lot of positives from some of the changes that we are looking at at the moment, but clearly more to do.
Thank you. I'll bring in Diane, who's wanting to come in, and then we'll move on to the next part of the meeting, if that's okay, Dan.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, there's been quite a lot of talk, it's moved to communication, and I want to follow on from what Abtisam said really, because Abtisam spoke about the need to communicate effectively with local businesses because of the pressures that they were under just trying to make a living, and I think that's right. You've spoken about talking to... You've spoken about talking to partners, you've talked about working with the chamber, you've talked about small, medium enterprises, but not about the people. And I think we really do need to develop an effective communication strategy, not just to talk about the initiatives or the strategies that you're going to use to deliver, but also about the reasons why we've developed this still, and the reason why this action is necessary. And if we don't do that, if we don't get that information out there, it just becomes one of the things that the Sheffield City Council is doing to someone to make their life harder, you know, stopping buses going through the city centre so they can't go in and have a social occasion, or charging them £10 when they have to drive their van through the city, or their taxes, so they have to work longer or harder to try and pay that money. If you don't understand the rationale, the reasons, the impetus, it becomes a weapon that's used against you, as Marx said, was reflected in the comments, rather than something that's positive for everyone in the future. And that is so, so important because the S9 or the S13 websites aren't going to talk about, they aren't going to take the high moral ground, they're going to talk about how much longer they have to work to earn those minutes, or how difficult it is opening the doors every day when football's reduced because of Covid. So, you know, really think about that, please, it's a plea, there's no response needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. So I wanted to flag up for everybody, we mentioned it briefly, today Yorkshire and Humber have published their plan, it's got 13 points in, they've got three more than us, but it doesn't make it any better than ours. One of the things that they do put quite high up is develop a positive vision. Now, we need to definitely work towards that. The other thing is focus on action in real world, which is something I think we absolutely do need to do, and education, which we have sort of addressed, but I'm not sure we have definitely. The other thing I want to do before we go on to the next thing is simply kind of say, question 49, the analogy you've drawn upon there is about a firefighter doesn't have a plan for putting the fire out, they put it out, we're burning, it's what we're going to do. So I'm kind of hoping that we can, in this next stage, move to the bits of what we can commit to today, and what we as a committee can bring in terms of added value to committing to today and tomorrow to help move this agenda forward. So on that point, I'm going to hand over to you for the next bit of the presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. So if we can have the next slide, thank you. So we discussed around the potential roles for the Transitional Committee, and this is just, the Chair had asked us to consider how the committee might potentially be able to input into the development of the climate change work into the programme that will emerge from this plan and also those delivery plans. This is just effectively a starter, just a sort of a discussion point. Some of those areas could be around policy development, so we've talked about the need for, alongside some of the physical changes and some of the other activity that's intended to be taken forward over the next 12 months and beyond, that there'll be a requirement for policy to be adopted to support that. There's also a potential role around looking at risks, looking at the opportunity to monitor the progress of our climate action and understand in more detail what's happening in different parts of the council. There's been reference to, obviously, a wide number of different services within the authority, whether that's housing or whether that's looking at what we're doing in business and skills, or what we're doing on transport, but also to work and bring other partners into those conversations as well, and work with external stakeholders and have conversations around what we're doing as a city on this. So if I can have the next slide, please. So it just set out an example here around what policy development might look like in terms of a role for the Transitional Committee. So, for example, again, so this, I think, picks up some of the questions that were raised in the discussion around the issue around equity and equality and ensuring a just transition, and again, starting to look at some of those difficult issues that are likely to arise as we start to develop those delivery plans, and ensuring that we aren't leaving anyone behind and that we are making sure that the approaches that have been proposed are ones which work for everybody in the city. So the examples here around, for example, how we ensure that people's jobs are, you know, in terms of the skills and what we're anticipating to see in some of those changes, will support new roles in the city and won't be detrimental, and actually, how we can support some people who are in roles that might be under pressure from the transition. But also about things like, how do we ensure that retrofit is delivered in a way that helps people and fuel poverty? There's also the discussion around how we balance competing priorities. councillor Turpin made a reference earlier about some of the issues that are faced with the housing challenge around the need for more housing in the city, but also housing quality, and ensuring that we're delivering houses to the standards which will help us reach our net zero ambition, but also providing enough houses in the city. So those sorts of discussions and decisions. If we can just look at the next slide, which is picking up the question around a just transition for workers, this might be an example of how we work, for example, around, you might want to take the example of employment. Obviously, as we know from a number of reports, including a recent LGA report that was produced last year, looking at the opportunities, there are a number of sectors which are expected to grow, but there's also certain sectors which are likely to come under increasing pressure through some of the changes. And I think we're probably, you know, in a city where we've got fewer what might be referred to as brown collar or high carbon jobs in some places in the country, but some of those jobs will be, will change dramatically and organisations need to be prepared for those changes. Some may become obsolete, but also new jobs will be created. There's a report that was out today, which has been produced by the Institute of Motor Manufacturers, and looks at the level of skills that are required in the country to support the increase in electric vehicles, and is anticipating something in the region of 55,000 jobs are going to be required in the next 10 years. So again, identifying those sorts of opportunities, how can we provide the support for local businesses to take advantage of that, and training schemes and other, you know, and other programmes through the supply chain, for example. So just on this slide here, we've got some examples of what we, you know, what the committee may want to look at, taking evidence from employers, from officers, from the trades unions, from the combined authority, and then providing a steer on high level direction, and then also feeding into those other Transitional Committees, because clearly this is an issue that covers across all our Transitional Committees, and so therefore, how we input and are able to shape some of those decisions is going to be increasingly important in taking this forward. So next slide, please. Thank you. So just, final slide is just looking at a specific area, for example, we touched on electric vehicles within the presentation earlier, but this might be an area where, picking up some of the conversations and the point around equality in particular, and obviously the point about putting people at the centre of the plan, this is clearly a really important area around retrofit and actually how we deliver that equitably. And so again, opportunities here around taking evidence from officers, from people, from residents, but also from the retrofit and construction industry in the city within the region, and then being able to provide a steer on some of the questions that were raised. Again, the question that was raised this morning from Mr Reeves about the potential for sort of enveloping schemes, and providing a steer on those sorts of high level policy issues around deep retrofit, around the opportunities around removing gas, and obviously the challenges that we've discussed earlier about the point that was raised again in public questions around heat pumps and some of those technology issues, but then also working with the Communities and Neighbourhoods Committee, because again, it's one of these areas that overlaps between a number of different committees. So hopefully, this has sort of given a bit of a sense of some of the areas that the committee might want to explore. As I say, it is really just a start of a tent, it's just a bit of an idea around where that work might be developed. So, yeah, back over to you, Chair, and I'll leave that slide up for the moment.
Thank you, Mark. I know my head where it is at, and certainly the efficiency of housing to tackle lots of the equitability bits is where my head's at, but I don't want to overly influence the committee, having just overly influenced the committee. So I'm open to suggestions from the floor as to where they want to see, how they see us going forward, where we can add value, and what areas specifically people want to look at and how we do that today. So I'm open to suggestions from anybody. Is that a finger up there, Paul, or is that a... Yeah. Barbara?
Just a comment, I think it was in the Aret report, it said 30% of the carbon footprint is caused by housing, therefore, because that was the biggest single issue. I mean, that does seem a good starting point.
Thank you, Barbara. And Paul, yes, that is a finger up for answering.
Thanks, yeah. Housing is the one, housing, I think housing is the easiest thing to tackle because we know what it, it doesn't move, and we know what we need to do. And when we think, you know, about people paying according to their means, I was having a conversation a few weeks ago with someone in the industry, and they were saying that presently, if you've got money in the bank, insulating your house is the best place to invest it, and they were talking about you get a return on your investment between eight and 16% a year, which is miles more than any other savings account that you could possibly have, it also adds value to your building. So, you know, it's, when we talk about insulating, tackling inequalities and insulating our social housing, our own housing, and we need the money from government or somewhere to do that, well, we can also be encouraging the people who can afford to do it themselves.
Thank you, Paul. And having looked at this myself and done this, insulating your rafters can give you a return within one to two years of the entire outlay of that, and therefore, you've got year on year savings thereafter. Barbara?
Can I make a quick point? A lot of it depends on the construction of the house. I mean, I can't at the moment insulate my house because it hasn't got a cavity, so it's, like everything, it's not a simple answer. It has to be external, but I've looked into it, you know, and basically, it's like everything. It'll work for some places, not for others, so I'm a bit wary about these sort of broad brush sort of statements. Housing, yes, how to insulate depends so much on the actual house itself and its situation, like terraced, as was mentioned in the question.
And actually, that brings me to one of the things I was thinking, is having those conversations with the public about what the barriers are, not just the fiscal barriers, but also the physical barriers. Because, yeah, I know what I can do on my house, and Paul likewise knows what he can do on his, but others may not fully appreciate. And actually, my previous house was a single skin mid terrace, so that would need external fascias putting on there. So I think that is something that, those discussions and that evidence gathering is something we could do. I think doing it on a citywide basis might be a bit difficult. I think we almost need to pick a couple of target areas that we can take, because there's not many of us in this room at the moment where we could actually take focused interventions on and get evidence and see what we can do there. I don't know, that's kind of roughly where my head's at, I'm not sure. Barbara?
No, I was just thinking that there are some schemes, like the tarot blocks where they've been clad firstly unsuccessfully, now successfully in some cases, and that's a starting point, because the materials used for cladding in and out and insulating have changed a lot, and I honestly don't know what the current regulations are for materials, because it varies so much with the actual height, so it's a minefield, have fun. But it's got to be a starting point, yeah, and I don't know. But there must be some places where, not some, not new builds, but retrofitting has worked, and I always look at where, you know, you want to compare, where it's worked and why it worked, and where it didn't work and why.
Thank you, Barbara. And yes, Diane wanted to come in there, and I'm kind of mindful of the stuff that Abtisam was saying about how do you access that information and how do we get the information out to people. We have had questions in the past about setting up a shopper's guide on how best to enable the public to get the information so they don't fall foul of cowboys and charlatans that may otherwise want to exploit those ignorances. Diane?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, technology moves so quickly, doesn't it, that things that are unaffordable and impractical, one year, a couple of years later, become, you know, what happens. I think I like the idea of talking to people and seeing where the barriers are. And I also think I'd like to learn from other people that have already done it, so we can learn from other people's mistakes, so have other authorities gone down this road, and can we learn from them, so that, you know, we take a bit of a shortcut, we, you know, move to year three rather than trying to formulate something and do a couple of pilots and see that doesn't work and technology's moved on, you know what I mean? So it's that kind of learning from others. I'm a great believer in pinching with pride.
Pinching with pride, indeed. So it seems like we are moving towards, my own personal bias, so I'm not going to argue against it. Tim, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I was going to say, we had the question from George Rees, who was saying about collective facilitation for terraces, because it's, funnily enough, the housing stock, if the government produce some cash, our own stock won't be the worst thing, it's the terrace, a lot of the terrace housing that we've got in Sheffield that needs to have some really inventive solutions potentially that we're looking at, and, you know, having a collective facilitator, you know, under the Sheffield City Council, so people know, we talk about the cowboys and the roves and that sort of thing, that's what we need to be looking at as a part of it, because we can clean up our own housing stock and then find that we've, you know, all these rose and rose terraces are still emitting vast amounts of CO2, and that's what we need to be looking at down, you know, down the line, and making sure that we can give them the best possible advice, or tell them where the best possible advice is.
Thank you, Tim. So we seem to have in a consensus mostly falling out that we look at housing and learn from what has been done, what can be done, and what needs to be done for the rest of the city. Is that, I'm kind of looking around, no, nobody shaking their head contrary, so there seems to be consensus on that one. Excellent. So how we take this forward then? Doug, I know as the cabinet member, any of the commitments we sign up to today, you have to underwrite the cheque for, and because of the way we're constructed, but we are in that strange position of moving rapidly from the Transitional Committee to a full committee. So we have at our disposal here the opportunity to try some of those new working practices going forward, and not just getting a big stick and beating Doug, Mark, Tom and Victoria and saying, now go away and do it, but what we can do to help deliver on that. So I do feel that we do need to have more of a conversation about how we actually explore the housing element, whether we can identify target areas, specific needs that are specific to Sheffield. Definitely, having lived in a mid terrace, I'm mindful that terraces are a particular nightmare, having now had the luxury of living in a 1930s, semi-detached with cavity wall, I can feel that I've got my cavity done and feel happy about that, but that's not best. Chris, yeah?
Yeah, some of the evidence that we should already have, probably about 30 years ago, there was a big housing enveloping scheme in Darnall, and you can still see the houses that were done along Stanleyford Road and that area, and it would be interesting to see how those houses have stood up over the test of time from the work, because that was a lot of insulation, put in frontages on tech and from single to double skin and insulated then. That was before I came on council, so about 30 years ago. So that would be interesting to get the information from that, from housing.
And Diane?
No, I forgot about that, yeah. Darnall, I think Tinsley was the last enveloping scheme we did, and there should be people still around that have evidence on that. I think that was when Clive Betts was leader.
Yeah, yeah.
There really are people around, and that was effective and did... There really are people around and that that was effective and did bring those properties back into a um in into into use and profitable use. So, yeah, we have our own learning.
We may we may want to uh invite Clive to come and talk. I don't know. Maybe not. Yes. Okay, so I think there's quite a clear steer there for officers. There is one other thing that did occur to my mind and that kind of touches on Barbara's dilemma. Um one of the questions, I can't for the life of remember the number now, so that's that's my uh failing, um was houses um in the south east of the city, I I I think that can't necessarily put solar panels on because of planning restrictions and such like. I think there was there was something in there. So that might be something to put in the consideration as well because there are obviously the areas that we can do, but there is stuff that we need to do some lobbying on some of our neighboring authorities in terms of being a bit more um inclusive in their attitudes towards uh renewables and future proofing our city and tackling climate change. So it's so there is quite um quite a wide spread for us there. So is that something that officers feel that they can get back to us really quickly on? I'm mindful, I don't want to make a plan to set out to to plan to put out the fire. I want us to actually start moving at pace and start gathering that information so that we can enable policies to be enacted as rapidly as money's come in to deliver it. Um i- is where my 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 mind's at. Is that something we think we can do? Tom?
Can I suggest, Chair, that the 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 next stage is that we kind of almost take take that steer and then kind of kind of develop something in terms of a future future session. Um and noting the desire for for pace, we will uh kind of present and and discuss with yourself as Chair and 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 councillor Johnson in terms of what that might look like in terms of how it kind of moves from that kind of evidence and on what broader understanding of some of the key issues. And and then adds to that, you know, emerging delivery plan around that theme. Um if we could, if we present something, you know, back to you to consider, is that is that acceptable?
Yep, yep, that seems uh widespread consensus, in fact, total consensus on that one. Thank you. I uh really appreciate that. And we will look forward to taking that um from from you guys as soon as possible. Which kind of then finishes off on that item for now. Um and moves on to the work plan, which we have just been segwayed into nicely. That clock's still on summer time, so it's not a quarter past one. Doug?
Can I just say, I think the officer are going to pack up, but just say, can I say thanks to them because I I know how much they're empowering through this. There's been so many iterations of this and so much input from an awful lot of people, mostly helpful, but there's been a a lot of work going on there. So um I think it's kind of testament that that there's been quite a lot of consensus here today because it's been well explained. So thanks.
And I'm sure we'd all like to echo that that sentiment and 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 thank officers for their sleepless nights that I'm sure I've no doubt we've caused you recently and I don't know, do I wish that we caused you more sleepless nights or do we not? I I'm not quite sure how that one works, but but thank you, yes. Uh Alice?
Yeah, um it's the draft work plan pages forty seven, forty eight and forty nine. I think you went to forty eight. So it's a list of possible work streams or the work streams you're really engaged in. There's one in there, pathway to net zero, update on ten point plan. You've, that's what you've done today and you've also got, I think, the way forward with that. So, you know, that's kind of one one thing tick ticked off. Um just to draw attention to the fact that um you will be seeing another version, it's an iteration of the central area strategy uh at a future meeting. I'm hoping it's the December one, but working on it's that subject to kind of officer availability and timeline as much as anything. There was an ethical procurement workshop that was held offline. Well, offline is virtual, but it wasn't in a public session. There will be a second one of those. Um and I think the other thing that really, so you're going to get quite stuck into now the the ten point plan absolutely rightly and through housing, which is going to be quite absorbing for you as a committee. The other one to flag up is the local plan and the kind of fairly urgent timeline there is with that in term in understanding the options and the full council make final decisions on what is considered to be the local plan's spatial options. But in the meantime, there's very much um an ask for this committee to take part in understanding that over the next month, really, less than that. Sort of feel like that by the end of November, which isn't really that far away now. And so it's about you as a committee working at how with, you know, ways of working for this particular work stream. Some of you may have been part of conversations that have suggested a route forward for that, but they were obviously private conversations, not not public in in this committee. So I'm I'm aware of them, but I do feel this is kind of over to the committee to just perhaps have a short discussion or make a view, Chair.
So um obviously, yes, the local plan and the stuff that we've had in the ten point plan and certainly the housing focus uh seems a natural fit, not just of housing of the future, but housing of the past and how we address all those issues. Martin?
Yeah, the the other one that surely must be very close to the top of our agenda should be the Business Recovery Plan post Covid. Because if the city's economy doesn't recover, then a lot of the other things we're talking about, we won't be able to afford.
Absolutely. Thank you for for that reminder, Martin. That does have to go on there. So um is there any other emissions that anybody has spotted, not at this stage? So having just wished that officers don't have too many sleepless nights, I'm wishing we don't have too many sleepless nights, but we do have a significant amount of work ahead of us. I know from conversations I I I've been engaged in with Paul and Martin and and Barbara to a to a lesser extent, um we do need to progress the local plan and that will have a big commitment on us. Dates, I believe, are being set in diaries to try and get briefings and information sent out to all parties so that we're all equipped to make sure we can deliver um a vision for the future. And again, it speaks to the 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 thing that we need to do with the ten point plan is the local plan, we need to set forward a vision on what the city should look like uh as as we are instructed by by those that we represent. So hopefully we can start working on that and push that forward. With regards to the local plan, I think dates will be circulated amongst groups for briefings, uh Labour, Green, Labour, Liberal Democrats and the Conservative Member to make sure that everyone is informed as best as possible. And so that we can then hopefully come to a some form of a consensus position on that one. So I think that will be a a slow burner in the background.
I might, Chair. Um definitely in the background, not that slow. I understand there's quite a pressing need to uh sort of move on with this, partly led by, as you're aware, sort of external government um desires for the local plan for Sheffield to to be there and to be in a um in a good position.
And we know that government wants us to take on an extra thirty five percent uplift. Bless them. Yes, so um if if that's where we're at, okay, so we will work with the diaries to see what we can do and get get stuff progressed as best as possible whilst I am mindful, I don't want to overwork members within this committee because though I hesitate to say with what's going on in Parliament, lots of us do have commitments outside of this place and we don't get paid anywhere near like the parliament earnings to, and I'm not sure they work as hard as we do either. And I don't care if we're upset. So um I we will try and do that while trying to be mindful that certainly, I know members of the executive from having been in a similar position before are already working nonstop and will be aging rapidly. But also that those of us that also have other commitments um are able to fit in everything that we need to uh and deliver the best as best we can. So Barbara, sorry, Alice?
Um if I might, just thinking through on the local plan. I suspect there'll be a requirement for another session of this committee in public, another meeting to be put in your diaries. Um because you do have a December meeting already in, but that's fairly heavily laden with some some other activity for you. Um so I'm just flagging up that, yes, you'll see probably emails around um some offline working, but I think you're going to find that there is a need for a another meeting of this committee, just flagging that up.
So yes, please keep an eye on your diaries. Some of the and the thing about the online public discussion is that obviously though we're trying to get upskilled in the the issues around the local plan, uh we will need to make sure that we have these discussions in public so we're not seen to be stitching up the city in smoky backroomed decisions. So I am I am apologetic for the time and commitments that I'll give probably in the pre-Christmas run up bar humbug. I apologise now, but it is because we are in a difficult place. So thank you for your indulgence in your time today and for the input that everyone's given. It's very much appreciated. Thank you, everybody.